Welcome and thank you to those who are joining us tonight to hear from your candidates for the Verona Area Board of Education. At a time when we are all burned out from Zoom meetings and virtual gatherings, I commend your dedication to local government and democracy. I especially want to thank the candidates for being here tonight who are offering to speak directly to Verona Area School District residents. We hope this will educate voters as they cast their spring election ballots. We'll start by briefly discussing the format of tonight's forum. Each candidate will be allowed to deliver an opening statement. Unified newspaper group staff have prepared the questions and the number of those we get through depends on how much time we have. The candidates have not been provided the questions, but we gave them a hint of the topics yesterday. If there is time, we will also ask questions submitted by the public. We are scheduled for a 7:30 PM stop, but if there are lots of questions or the discussion is going well, we can stretch it by a few minutes. We'll reserve time for each candidate to make a closing statement. As I read off each question, I will start a timer that will be visible on the screen to my left. Please be respectful of everyone's time and abide by the principles of fairness by staying within the time limits. We also ask the candidates to show respect toward one another by not interrupting and by leaving your microphones muted unless you are asked to speak for a question or rebuttal opportunity. I don't think this will be a problem with you guys, but I just wanted to let you know. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer a question and one minute for rebuttal or additional comments. No rebuttals will be allowed until all candidates have answered the question and candidates will be allowed to speak in the order they answered the question. We've got six candidates tonight. Five are for the three at-large seats and the other, the outside city seat, is running unopposed. We'll go in alphabetical order tonight, rotating for each round who starts. Without further ado, let's begin. Each candidate will give their opening statement. We'll have Carolyn Yonki go first. Carolyn, you've got two minutes.
Thanks, Kimberly. So as Kimberly said, my name is Carolyn Yonki and my family has lived in Verona for almost 10 years and we have four kids who are in the district. My children are in kindergarten, third grade, fifth grade, and seventh grade. For my day job, I am the founding attorney of Athena Legal Solutions and we help small businesses with any of their business legal needs. I've been on the board since 2018 and currently serve on the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee and the Personnel and Policy Committee. In addition, as a board member, I serve on the Verona Area Education Foundation. I am excited to be a part of the forum today and looking forward to a great conversation.
Wonderful, thank you. Jen, we'll have you go with your opening statement next.
Thanks, Kimberly. Well, I'm excited to be here with all of these other candidates running for school board in 2021. I'll just start by saying my roots in the Verona Area School District run pretty deep. I worked in the district for 20 years. I taught at the high school for a large number of those years. I taught at Savannah Oaks Middle School for a number of years and also worked as math resource and intervention support there as well. I spent a few years as our district's induction program coordinator, which is a big term for just saying I helped train and support all of the new hires in the district, especially those that were first and second year teachers, and worked with the teachers that we recruited to be their mentors. So worked across the district. So with that frame in particular, I have connections and experiences in all of the buildings across the district. Even more closely now is Stoner Prairie where my third grade daughter attends school and I have been on the PTO board at Stoner Prairie since she started there as a kindergartner. We moved to the district right before she was born. But prior to that and continuing on, I've been actively involved in the community as well. I teach group fitness classes and yoga, so I've gotten to know quite a few people just in general through my own hobbies and of course through kiddo connections. And then currently I am employed at UW Madison. I'm working in secondary education, so I'm training and supporting pre-service secondary teachers predominantly in math, since that's my background area. And our program is a connection to ESL. They get dual certified. We have ESL practices in our pre-service teachers and a really deep focus on social justice and equity. So I think with my background and my current experience, hopefully I can be a valued trusted thought partner to the school board.
Thank you. Looks like John is not here yet, but so if he arrives before we end opening statements, we'll come back to him. But in the meanwhile, we will go to Meredith. Meredith, you've got two minutes.
Thanks, Kimberly. Hi, I'm Meredith Sturchristensen. I have been in Verona now for 20 years. I have a son who has gone through the Verona School, starting at Country View all the way through Savannah and is now at the high school. When I first moved to Verona, I have a background in education, so I used to be a special education teacher. And so when I moved to Verona, I was working at Country View as an aide in the classrooms until my son was born. And I was home with him for a while and then went back to law school and am now an attorney working in family law and child advocacy. I've been on the board since 2016. I've been the board vice president since 2017. I've served as the chairperson of the Personnel and Policy Committee. I'm a member of the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. And most recently, I was able to chair the Superintendent Search Committee, which was a very exciting time for our district and for our board and we are looking forward to the fruits of that labor. This has been, this has been an interesting year and I very much welcome the opportunity to spend time answering questions and I just want to thank you and the Verona Press for giving us this opportunity. And I also want to thank the other candidates for their service actively now or stepping up to put their emphasis on community service. This is a great time to be part of the conversation and so thanks, everybody. Oh, I should also say I'm running for the outside portion seat.
Sorry, I moved a little bit too fast there. We'll have Nicole go next. Nicole, you've got two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Nicole Vafdari. I am running for one of the member-at-large seats. My family and I have lived in the Fitchburg area for just shy of two years now, but we've been in the Madison area for over 10 years and we just love this community. My husband and I feel very strongly, we purchased a home in the Verona Area School District specifically for the schools. We've heard nothing but amazing things about not only the curriculum, but the families, communities, and the students and diversity involved in that school district. So when I heard there was an opportunity to step up and serve, I just was excited at the opportunity. I'm super excited to be here and discuss with all of you. And I also want to say I'm very excited to be running with such amazing co-candidates as well. So I'm super appreciative of all the options that constituents will be provided. I have two children. I have a three-year-old and a five-month-old, so a little bit on the younger side for me. But I'm excited to work hard, to invest in this community and in the education system as the daughter of an educator and an immigrant. I feel like I bring a unique perspective and would bring kind of a fresh new perspective as well, both with my time of service on the Wisconsin Women's Network Board, as well as my time serving in the community through Boys and Girls Club and United Way. So I'm super excited at the opportunity and thank you so much for organizing this.
Thank you. And then last but not least, Yana, you have two minutes.
Thanks, Kimberly. I'm always last. I've been a Williams my whole life. My partner's last name is also William, so I'm gonna forever be a Williams. It's just I'm always gonna be last, but good evening. My name's Yana Williams. I am also running for one of the at-large seats. I am one of the newest school board members. I was appointed in September of 2020 and have been working full force since September of 2020. I am involved in all three committees in the school board. So I am on budget, finance, grounds, and transportation. I am also in curriculum instruction, on the Curriculum Instruction Committee, as well as personnel and policy, just really seeking to bring about change in all of the areas in our school district. It was difficult for me to make a choice, so I said I'll just do all of them and figure it out from there. And that's what I've done. You know, I came on the board in September really seeking to impact change. I feel that we're in a change season. We have an opportunity to change what it looks like for our students, to change what it means for our students to be educated and I am rooted in that. I work really diligently in that as a member of the board currently. Full-time, I am a programming coordinator for the Office of Youth Reengagement with Madison Metropolitan School District. I oversee alternative secondary programs there. I am also the founder and director of Dear Diary. It is a mentoring organization for Black and Brown girls in the community impacted by incarceration. So that's my, I always say that's my other full-time job. Absolutely love doing that. I used to work for UW Madison prior to that. Just everything I've done has been centered in education. So I felt that being on the board is another opportunity for me to be able to give back. So thanks for having me.
Well, thanks to all of you. We're gonna launch right into questions. For the viewers at home, I'll remind you guys that I will ask each question for every single person. So if you miss a question, don't fret. We'll start with, sorry, I gotta scroll here. We'll start with Jen. Your question is as follows. "Verona Area School District pivoted to virtual learning within a week of school closure mandates being announced and then brought back its K-2 students in the fall as a hybrid plan of what district administrators and the board wanted. How do you feel the district handled virtual learning this year?" You have two minutes.
Thank you. Well, in general, virtual learning, having never done anything like this before, I would say as a district, I wanted to share kudos to everyone, to every educator, to every school board member, to every family member, to every student for completely, as you said, Kimberly, pivoting on a moment's notice and trying to make the most of everything. I think some of the successes that I would say the district had is making some really deliberate changes between sort of the panic shutdown in the spring to being more deliberate in planning to start the school year in the fall, recognizing, you know, what opportunities were not available in that immediate close and what could be reshifted and revamped to make virtual learning, you know, sort of the best it could possibly be and to continue to reflect and revise within that entire fall semester. I also really value the emphasis that the district and the board and the educators put on social emotional support for students. In my time as an educator, that's always been something that I've always held really, really important and I feel sometimes we treat that as a sidecar. You know, we think about the academics, we think about all the other structures and you know, the social emotional learning piece is just kind of this extra little. And I think it appears as though we've finally embraced that value as not being extra, but being incredibly fundamental. And so if that's something that has surfaced out of virtual learning, I'm somewhat thankful for that, that we can continue to use that as a priority in our planning. And again, I'll just share extra kudos to the teachers who in virtual spaces have worked tirelessly, have worked tirelessly, sometimes with unsupportive commentary and sometimes with very supportive commentary. And I want to thank them for all the work that they've done for students that has not been easy. Virtual learning, cheers to moving on.
Thank you. It was a long question, so I'm only gonna read the back half. And since John is not here, we'll skip to Meredith. The question is, "How do you feel the district has handled virtual learning in the last year? You've got two minutes."
Boy, that is such a loaded, that's a huge question for two minutes of time. I like how Jen put it, that we switched from the panic shutdown to a more intentional shut, a more intentional process come September. It's been a challenge and I can't say enough of how grateful I am to our staff for the resiliency that they've shown in adapting to the changes that have continued to affect their workplace and their continued dedication to putting our students first, because that's why we're here. It's for the benefit of our students' education. And having our staff engaged is what helps our students thrive. Our parents and our community have also risen to an amazing challenge and with the resiliency that they've shown with, you know, schedule changes and last-minute adjustments based on public health orders. And honestly, our adaptation of this has only been possible through the support of our staff, through the support of our families. And I think that we have done the best that we can do in a really difficult time. Someone else said that all districts at this time should be graded on a curve, because if you were grading everyone just as a, you know, on a flat scale, I'm not sure who's succeeding, you know, beyond expectations in this enormously challenging time. But Verona had one-to-one device implementation already in place. We were able to continue providing meals to our students who needed them. We got hotspots out where we needed them. We helped teachers with PD so they could provide the best virtual experience that our students could have. Have there been struggles? Absolutely. But again, I go back to the resiliency of our staff and our families that have helped keep our students on track. And cheers, yes, let's be done with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole, I'll repeat the question. "How do you feel the district handled virtual learning in the last year?"
Yeah, so I will echo what the two ladies before me have stated. I think it's, if anything, the pandemic has taught us, it has taught us how much we cherish our own children and also how much we cherish the people who teach and inspire and care for them. And so I think the district has done an amazing job at being really thoughtful. I think one of the things that was very difficult was understanding everybody's different perspective. You look on Facebook and there's groups who want to stay virtual only. There are groups who want to bring their kids back full-time. And I know when I was going around collecting my signatures at the beginning of this campaign, a lot of what I heard from the majority of people was, "I just want somebody to come to the board and represent thoughtfulness and represent both sides and understand that..." I have a friend who's a teacher and a mom and she said, "The sides of each other are fighting, the two sides of me are fighting each other all the time." And so I think that's what I've been really impressed about. I also do appreciate the amount of investment that we have made, as Meredith spoke to, to make sure that this has been an equitable experience and that certain students aren't disadvantaged and unable to participate in learning. So I'm very excited to get kids back in schools. I think we all agree that's where they learn the best. And I'm excited for teachers to feel safe and comfortable and just getting back to where we were. So I will give a third kudos, because it's absolutely worth it, to all the teachers and staff who've worked so hard.
Thank you. Yana, I'll repeat the question. "How do you feel the district has handled virtual learning in the last year?"
Yes, so I will do a fourth echo of what others have said. I think that we have handled it to the best of our ability. You know, we were all dealing with a pandemic at the same time, right? And so we can't, we can't forget about that. And that includes our teachers, that includes our staff. And yet everyone was still willing to be on the front line to provide an education for our students and provide the best education they could, given the circumstances and what we needed to learn as we were going through this. I think in addition to that, virtual learning has provided a new opportunity for us. It is something that we didn't even know we could do. And now we have learned that we can do it and we can do it well. And there has been some challenges. However, we are continuing to learn that there are ways that our students can be educated, whether they're in the buildings or not. For some of our students, this has been a better experience than in-person. And so again, another opportunity for us to teach our students and to implement programming that works and still educates those who need to be educated. You know, it is, I agree with Nicole, even as a board member, it is difficult for us to make a decision as to, do we come back or do we stay home, right? It is a constant, what do we do? All of us are seeking to do whatever is best for our students. And sometimes that's in-person full-time, sometimes that's virtual full-time. It depends on the student, it depends on the grade. So it's just so difficult for us even to make that decision. However, I appreciate that we all continue to work together. We all continue to lean on each other for support and answer questions and seek advice and expertise from each other and be as innovative as we can during this time, because we're all learning. I work for another school district and we're learning the same things that we're learning in Verona. So kudos to everybody again and everybody's doing the best that they can and doing it well.
Thank you. And then last but not least, Carolyn, you've got two minutes to answer the question. "How do you feel the district has handled virtual learning in the last year?"
Well, you know, they say hindsight is 2020, right? This was an experience that nobody has ever been through or was prepared to really handle for, I mean, this was like a year from when our schools closed. So I first want to say thanks to the board members that came before me, because thanks to them, we had one-to-one technology. We were able to pivot so much easier than other school districts were able to because we showed innovation and investment in our students and technology way before now. I'm really thankful to our staff. This has been a lot of change and every organization suffers from change management and this has been change after change after change. And I think one of the big things that is my takeaway from this is how do we move forward and find ways to do better change management? How do we better support our staff when we have to make these really big changes in how they do their job? To me, that's a big takeaway. I'm also really thankful that we did what we could to support families in many different ways, right? As far as opportunities that were available with busing, you know, the hotspots and making meals available. We really did a lot, but families stepped up a lot. I mean, parents aren't used to teaching and doing their job all at the same time and also dealing with a pandemic. That's, it's a lot on families and it was very stressful. It is still stressful for a lot of families. And I'm really thankful that we made the decision very early on to bring K-2 back and we were able to do it safely since September and we've continued to keep our students and staff very safe. The only other takeaway I have is that I'd go back and I'd insist we made it more of a joint decision between the board and administration, so there'd be more transparency for everybody. But I really thank everybody for what they've done.
Thank you. I'd like to offer a moment. If anyone would like to have a rebuttal or just extend the conversation by a minute, just a reminder, we'll go in the order that you guys all answered questions, if anyone would like that. If there are no takers, we will just continue on to the next question. So since John is not here, we'll start with Meredith for this question. The question is as follows. "As of next week, Verona Area School District will have been doing virtual learning in some form for a full year. Lessons have been learned in that time. How can the district capitalize on those lessons learned to provide more options for district families in future school years?" You've got two minutes.
Okay, Kimberly, I think this is a hard question, because I think we look, I think it's hard to look back at such a close range at 2020 and see the silver linings. But yet there have been some silver linings that we've definitely discovered. And I think that one of the ones that I am most impressed with is the opportunities for parent connection that have been enhanced by virtual meetings. I'm thinking specifically of maybe our superintendent, day in the district interviews with our superintendents. And the turnout that we had for those interviews and those forums was extraordinarily high compared to what we've had with any other in-person type of forum. And the fact that we were able to have that many people attend virtually, participate, leave feedback, we were able to offer it in our Spanish, to our Spanish-speaking families. It was, it increased participation in a way that I didn't expect. And that's something that I most certainly think we need to capitalize on moving forward, that it's not just in-person connection, that there are ways to increase connection. I'm thinking also parent conferences. It's a lot easier to go have a parent conference on your lunch break than take off the hour and a half, two hours that you need to go in to meet with a parent. Even just simple conversations face-to-face over a computer connection, they can be more productive than a phone call and less burdensome on both parties than having to go in and meet in person. So I think this has shown us that there's definitely opportunities for connection and meaningful connection in a time where we've felt disconnected largely in person, but we've still been able to find ways that we should be taking some of these these technology tools with us as we move forward.
Thank you. Nicole, you're next and I'll repeat the question for you. "How can the district capitalize on the lessons it's learned with virtual learning to provide more options for district families in future years?" You've got two minutes.
Thank you. I actually love this question because I neglected to mention I work in IT. So I'm an IT professional. I'm the Director of Application Systems Implementation, very long title. I should come up with something shorter. But I work at Healthgrades and one of the things that I love is finding technology and using it to find solutions to everyday problems. And I think that's what technology has kind of forced us to do, not just in our personal lives. As Meredith has said, I think people realized, I know myself, I reconnected with friends that live in different areas using technology and really took advantage of technology and the power it provides. And so I agree that I believe we can extend that to make things like parent engagement more equitable, especially for those who don't have the flexibility of a nine-to-five or aren't able to take off work to engage in their children's education. I think the other thing that's really exciting is I think our teachers, being the adaptable, amazing human beings that they are, are learning more and more about how technology can augment education. And so I think that's something that will be really exciting to learn and start incorporating once we're back in person. Where is technology actually a strength? I think the other thing we can capitalize on is because everybody had to go virtual at the same time, there's now this huge resource of digitized educational assets that we can all capitalize on. And so while I know we're all absolutely yearning to get back into in-person learning as safely as possible, I think technology will play a very nice complementary role to that return to in-person.
Thank you. Yana, you're next. I'll repeat the question for you. "How can the district capitalize on lessons learned from virtual learning to provide more options for district families in future years?"
Yeah, thanks for that question. I actually really like that question too, because I think that virtual learning has allowed us to be innovative and to do something that, again, we never thought we were able to do or even thought about moving into doing, primarily in K-12. I personally would like to see us have a fully virtual, robust curriculum within our district. I think that that needs to be the direction that we're moving in. I also think about how many of our higher education institutions are moving into more hybrid teaching styles. I taught at UW, I taught in-person, I taught online only, and I taught hybrid. And this is the direction that we're moving into in the future. Many companies are realizing that, why do we have office buildings when everybody can work at home and we give you a computer and a desk and you stay home and you do your job there? And so that's really the future of where we're going. And I think that in order for us to uphold our mission of all of our students being successful, we need to be able to teach them how to adapt to such circumstances. So having a fully robust, strong virtual curriculum, and I'm not saying that we don't have one now, but it's one that we created on the fly a year ago. And I know that there are things we can do better. But I would love to see in our district, a fully robust, virtual, virtual hybrid, some kind of system that will incorporate virtual learning to a greater capacity, even once in-person is open. Because I do think that it's an opportunity for us and it's an opportunity for our students as well as our families and our teachers.
Thank you. Carolyn, you're next. I'll repeat the question. "How can the district capitalize on lessons learned from virtual learning to provide more options for district families in future years?" You've got two minutes.
So I think one of the biggest things, as Yana had mentioned, is that this forced us to innovate and to innovate fast. And we know that there's some struggles in our district and so really working that innovation muscle is important. And so I'm glad that we've gotten a chance to exercise it so we can continue to use it. I think there's a couple of places where it's really exciting, some of which have been touched on, is we need to better understand where our students thrived in the virtual environment so we can capitalize that and use it in the future in whatever places that's appropriate. So we can capitalize that and use it in the future in different, in whatever places that's appropriate. I'd mentioned before about change management. I think that's definitely something from, from this time that we need to lean into. We also, um, virtual parent-teacher conferences, th- this is a game changer. Parent-teacher conferences are always a struggle to get people engaged. But as Meredith said, we had so many families engaged through the superintendent process. And now through parent-teacher conferences, like this is definitely something that needs to continue on. It's great for staff, it's great for families. We also need to spend some really significant time talking to our staff and say, what worked, what made your job easier in this way, in this environment? And how were you better able to do your job? So we can learn from them and take that forward. I mean, they're on the front lines, they're the ones who know. As Jen had said earlier too, we really invested in social emotional learning and made it a key part of the curriculum. I'd like to take that forward. In addition, our, our kids have learned some really great skills way earlier than they would have through this time. And that, that's going to serve them well moving forward. But from a, what I'd, I'd like to see us do better is I'd like us to really understand the impacts these changes have had, had, have had on families, all of our families, not just those who have spoken out, because it's important that we hear from everyone, not just those who are most vocal.
Thank you. And then Jen, last but not least, uh, you're next. I'll repeat the question. How can the district capitalize on lessons learned from virtual learning to provide more options for district families in future years? You've got two minutes.
Um, so I appreciate, and I find myself kind of perseverating around how. Because honestly, I think that's one of the main reasons why I'm sitting on this little Zoom box with you all tonight is because I think the how is, is beyond our scope. There are so many hows to be discovered, and I think this is such a key moment based on things that you've all shared, experiences that we've seen. And where can we go to really circle back to the mission and the priorities of the district? If there isn't a better time to service up, to start to just bring in new ideas and new ways of thinking? I mean, I, I could hardly sit still thinking about it. And, and I guess on the flip of that, I do get a little bit nervous when I hear, you know, I can't wait to get back to normal. Gosh, I hope not. Does that sound horrible? I hope we don't rush back to everything we used to do in school. Because, I mean, data says it's not working for all of our students. So if all students must be successful, we can't go back and do what we did. So what we do instead, oh my gosh, the world is our oyster. And I appreciate how all of you have really shared this collaborative piece, that we have innovative staff. We have educational experts and leadership, and we have a really collaborative school board that can all work together to just discover spaces we've never seen. I also do want to add the piece just from my professional frame of working with pre-service educators, teachers that have learned to be teachers this year and have done their full student teaching this year. They have a skill set that we can tap into. How do you connect deeply with students? They have different answers than we've had in the past. How do you get meaningful feedback from your students on what they're learning? They have really amazing answers to that now. So the way that we bring in new teachers now too, I think is just so ripe for innovation and ingenuity. And I'll stop talking because I'm really excited.
Thank you all. Uh, I'd like to offer a one-minute rebuttal or conversation extension to anyone who would like it. If not, we will go right along with the next question. Uh, we will have Meredith start with this one. The question is as follows. A few months ago, the district chose not to renew a contract, City of Verona Police Department, because at the time, high schoolers had not returned to in-person instruction. And the district and city had yet to agree on the perimeters of the drafted contract. It's unclear yet whether police will be in the high school next year. What role should police play in schools going forward? You've got two minutes.
I first want to say, I want to thank our, our past officer, uh, Atkins, who served as our, our school resource officer. He's always done a fantastic job and has taken a very student-centered approach. As we move forward, the student-centered approach is what has to be front and center in a contract. There are some excellent resources from national organizations such as the National Association of, uh, School Resource Officers. And that's comprised of officers that's, their whole job is working in schools. And they've developed a triad model where a, an officer serves as a teacher, a mentor, and then a law enforcement officer. But it is no, uh, it's not at all directed towards student discipline. We do not in any way want to be criminalizing student behavior in schools. We don't want to put any roadblocks to education. Um, but we certainly could be fostering relationships and building relationships. And the best relationships that are built on mutual respect can often serve as a deterrent to any potential, um, misbehavior. If that isn't the focus and if restorative practices aren't involved in that, then we really need to be looking at whether the program has unintended cited, you know, unintended consequences that diminish the purpose of the program. I think you have to be intentional about what is the program? What is the program? Um, what are the goals of the program and what are the side effects of the, of the program? Before you can say a flat yes or no. Um, again, we've had an excellent officer in the, in the position in the past. If we're developing a contract though, we are stating our belief system overall for what this program should be and what it should encompass. And again, it has to be student-centered. If it is, if it is at all in a way that diminishes a student learning experience, we really need to be taking a look at that and questioning whether the same goals can't be achieved through other means.
Thank you. Uh, Nicole, it is your turn. I'll repeat just the last part of the question for you. Uh, what role should police play in schools going forward? You've got two minutes.
Yeah, this was, this was actually a question that the Verona Action Team, um, asked as well last night. And I think it's a really good one. You know, I've, I've had nothing but positive experiences with police officers and law enforcement. I have a police officer in my family, um, and I respect everyone in law enforcement who's putting their lives on the line. That being said, my experience is not everyone's experience. And I believe the importance of someone at the board level is to represent and acknowledge those difference of experiences. And so, um, much like Meredith was saying, um, I, I feel very strongly um, that the presence of law enforcement in schools can only persist if there is extremely deliberate improvements being made and, um, facilitation of training, um, and experience. I personally do not believe that, uh, a, a resource officer in the schools is the best way to establish a positive relationship between students and law enforcement in the community. Um, I've seen great leaders, Michael Johnson, who is the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, has amazing ways to establish positive relationships between officers and those who are members of his club. I just don't happen to believe that within schools is the best place for that to occur. That being said, I would bring an open mind to the conversation, definitely bring a fresh perspective, um, to the negotiations. Um, but as Meredith said, if there was not, um, a very significant investment and, um, seeing the, uh, police district step up and acknowledge, hey, we need to engage differently in the schools, I would not be interested in renewing that contract.
Thank you. Yana, you are next. Uh, the question is, what role should police play in schools going forward? You've got two minutes.
Thanks for the question. You know, I have a very interesting perspective, one as a woman of color and have seen some of the impacts of policing in my community, as well as someone who went to a high school with a amazing police officer who we lost right before we graduated. And it was devastating for our high school class. One of the things that I've noticed is that policing in schools has changed tremendously since I graduated from high school. And that was only 10 years ago. We had a officer who focused on safety, drugs on campus, weapons on campus, strangers on campus, safety issues. He didn't focus on high school discipline. We had a dean of students who focused on high school discipline. So we weren't being cited by the police for regular high school stuff. Um, and I think that that's important. My first experience with a officer in the schools here in Wisconsin was actually with Cory Saffold, which is very funny that it came full cirke- circle and Cory oversees our safety and security for the district. But I think that the district is in a great space with having someone like Cory, who oversees the work that he does and his team. Cory's been in the school as an officer, he's been on the street as an officer. He's an African-American male, he knows the impacts of law enforcement within our communities. And so I think that we're moving in the direction that we should be moving in. The culture of the police force is important as well. And it, right now with the contract that we have and the way that it is and the way that it was brought back to the board, it just doesn't have the culture that we need to represent what it is we're trying to do as a school district. Um, and because of that, I was not interested in renewing that contract right now and won't be if we don't have some changes that do focus on our students like Meredith mentioned.
Thank you. Carolyn, you are next, and I'll repeat the question. What role should police play in schools going forward? You've got two minutes.
So ideally, I'd like to see a police presence in our schools. I, I think it's important, if the worst were to happen, we would want somebody there to help protect our students. Unfortunately, it can't happen under the current terms presented by the city. As Meredith had pointed out, this really needs to be a student-centered contract that is focused on our students. As a board, our job is to take care of our students and to represent our student needs. Because we're accountable for educating them, nurturing them, protecting them, and preparing them for life after high school. Ideally, we would have a police presence that would support that, that they would be working hand-in-hand with us to keep them safe, but also not punishing them for the things that high school students do. This is the time for them to learn. And they can make mistakes within reason, but they shouldn't be worried about permanent record implications for normal high school misbehavior. Restorative justice is critically important in this contract. My, my hope is that the city will, will find a way to partner with us to create an agreement that truly protects and serves our students and meets all the needs of the student as a whole versus just being disciplinarians and, and finding ways to write more tickets. Which is in no way a reflection, as Meredith said, of our prior liaisons. You know, Ryan was amazing and, and did a great job. But our agreement is what lays the foundation for that relationship and ensuring that what happens is keeping our students in the center. And so I just really hope the city will work with us to make that happen so we can keep the police in our schools.
Thank you. And then last but not least, uh, Jen, it is your turn. Uh, the question is, what role should police play in schools going forward?
Well, I kind of want to say a lot of the same things that have already been said. Uh, but I, I do have another frame, well, two other frames that I think just really come up for me. And just from a very fundamental level, you know, recognizing if, if on one hand we're talking about safety, just pure and simple, for some of our students, police does not equal safety fundamentally. So just recognizing that and being able to process discussions around that, I think that's something we really need to acknowledge and understand. So then if we're not talking about safety and we're trying to really get at the root cause or the, the connection or the need for a role like this, I would be leery to get into any contract if we haven't taken a bigger picture thanks to the leadership of Cory Saffold with just overall discipline practices and procedures across the district. But I still feel like we're working kind of in a silo if we're just thinking about the high school and thinking about this one individual position. When really collectively, how is it that we're using discipline practices and procedures at all levels? What are students experiencing in the elementary school? Are we thinking about restorative circles and those practices right away from students at a younger age? Is some of the behavior, the things that we're seeing, the needs that students have, is it completely unrelated to any of this and we need more mental health support and other valued trusted adults in our school spaces? That's just a, a completely different way to be thinking. So I appreciate the opportunity to just really dig in here. I think we're again set up at a place to do that and start to really unearth, what is the root cause that we're looking to sort of match up? And making sure that we are, as two of you said very clearly, being very student-centered and recognizing how different student perceptions of all of this play out.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to offer, uh, a one-minute rebuttal or, uh, conversation extension to anyone who would like it.
I just wanted to say how, uh, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Saffold with the fantastic job that he has done in the time that he's been here, building a, a security team that is to a student that I've talked to, uh, recognized as, as trusted mentors, as people that they can go to and rely on. Um, and has seriously built a, a strong relationship, um, with the student body in the time that he's been here. And I'd also like to, um, to second what Jen said, this is a conversation that can't be focused at just the high school. This has to be a systemic conversation. Because students don't just show up in high school at, ready to, you know, be molded into, you know, new learners. This starts, the day that they come into our schools, we need to be working with them and we need to be building relationships. So it, it can't be just a, a slice, um, at a time. It has to be a holistic approach.
Thank you.
Kimberly, is this one minute for the whole, like, would we get one minute apiece or is it just one minute?
It's one minute for each of you. Yep.
Okay, so can I, I add something?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I just want to add that, um, you know, we have to be mindful of the school-to-prison pipeline is real. And it's happening, and it's even happening in our school district. But outside of that, I also want us to, to think about, and as we move forward in us being innovative, we will have to work collaboratively with law enforcement, whether they're in our schools or they're not. Because they're still going to be in our communities. And so whether we have an officer who is going to be at our high school or any of our other schools, I think that it's still just as important for us to merge that gap between law enforcement and our communities, particularly our communities of color. I'm going to stop, I'm, I'm probably out of time now.
I messed it up. Uh, I was on my screen, so pardon me. You have so many browses up and you get a little frazzled, so, um, anyone else like to offer, uh, one minute?
I would, um, if, if that allows, sure. Um, I think one of the things that Jen also touched on that really, um, I think everyone on the board needs to bring the perspective is our students are not isolated from everything that's been happening out in the world. Um, especially young students. Um, even my three-year-old understands, um, through the Black Lives Matter movement this past summer, um, she was able to understand some of those things. And so I think the thing that I'm highly encouraged about is, um, also paying attention and really looking at um, the governor's, uh, proposed budget and the increase in funding for mental health. Um, I really hope that that continues because I think Jen's right, that there's been such creative ideas brought forward on how potentially putting that effort into mental health instead of, um, maybe more heavy policing is a more positive approach for the community. Um, so just wanted to add that perspective as well.
Thank you. Would anyone else like, uh, a moment for rebuttal or, uh, conversation extension? If not, I'd like to shift gears a little bit now that John has joined us. So, uh, John, I'm going to put you right on the spot here. Uh, everyone was allowed a two-minute opening statement, as long as everyone is okay with you doing your opening statement. Uh, I'd like to give you those two minutes to do so.
Okay, well, first of all, my apologies to everyone. I didn't get a link for this, so I'm late. And I apologize for, uh, being in here late. For those of you guys that don't know me, my name is, uh, John Porco. I, I have a deep background in education, both as a researcher and as a teacher at multiple levels. And I have a lot of experience in the Verona School District, not only with my three kids, but also, um, volunteering through our Strategic Planning Committee and our Personalized Learning Committee. And then also having been the treasurer and president of, um, one of the charter schools in Verona's district. And so I have a lot of familiarity with, uh, how wonderful and innovative Verona schools can be. Um, so I'll try to keep it at that and save the time since I was late, so that was, that's probably all I need for now.
Uh, is everyone okay if we go back and let John answer at least one question? We have two about virtual learning, um, and I'd like you to at least be allowed to answer one of those. So, um, I'll move some things around here on my screen so I can see the question. I'll choose the first one we asked, so, uh, you'll have two minutes to answer this question.
Thanks.
The Verona Area School District pivoted to virtual learning, uh, within a week of school closure mandates being announced, and then brought back its K-2 students in the fall as a hybrid plan of what district administrators and the board want. and then brought back its K two students in the fall as a hybrid plan of what district administrators and the board wanted. How do you feel the district has handled virtual learning in the last year? You've got two minutes.
Two minutes, great. So I think the district has handled it in a lot of different ways. So like teachers have, have really handled it well. They've had to do phenomenal things in, in short uh, time periods with almost very little warning sometimes. And that's been very stressful for them. So as far as teachers are concerned, they've been handling it really well. I think, you know, with, with our administration and with our board, they've been handling it as well as they can. You know, they've been put in a situation where there's a lot of uncertainty and to have to make decisions that, to be perfectly honest, school boards aren't designed to make these sorts of decisions. But when everybody else abd, like, abdicates responsibility and it comes to the school board, then they've had to work hard to do that. If there's, if there's one thing I would wish for, it was, it would be more, um, transparent and open communication about the process of deliberating and not just the decisions that are made. So that we can see that, as I said, in another event, you know, we got emails up, down and sideways about how the things were going towards a referendum. Uh, and that was just building buildings. But, you know, now we seem to not get as much information about how these decisions are being made. And I, I trust that they're being thought through very thoroughly. But, you know, there are a lot of, uh, people in the districts whose lives are on hold on these decisions and they just need to know how that process is proceeding, whether you're going to go one way or another. And, 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 you know, people understand that the logistics of bringing kids back to school are hard. You know, there are a lot of, uh, a lot of problems that can arise from keeping kids apart and space problems and all that stuff. But, you know, being able to communicate that. And then also I think that this has really shown us the need for creative and flexible thinking. We're at a point now where it's not all or nothing. You're not either in schools or not. You've got to allow for creative responses, like doing things more outdoors. You know, the fact that we can go to sporting events but not do field trips. You know, there's got to be protocols in place to do that. And so we've got to be more, we've got to push to be more creative to solve these problems.
Thank you. And then as long as we get everyone's blessing here, is it okay if we ask you, uh, the police question that we were talking about, uh, when you entered? Okay, perfect. Uh, so I will read you the question, then you'll have two minutes. So, uh, a few months ago, the district chose not to renew a contract with the city of Verona Police Department. Because at the time, high schoolers had not yet returned to in-person instruction. And the district and the city had yet to agree on the perimeters of the drafted contract. It's unclear whether police will be in the high school next year. What role should police play in schools going forward?
So, good, hit me with the hard ones, like it. You know, just like in society at large, the police have a role to play. As I said again in another forum, that role in the schools, because schools occupy a very unique place in our world, somewhere between our homes and the public square. Where our kids are somewhere between children, learning how to be in the world, and adults that have to accept full responsibility for their actions. So when you introduce police into that environment, you have to be aware of a couple of things. First of all, you cannot invite the full force of the American judicial system into the schools. Then it has to do certain things because they're, they're mandated by their rules to do certain things. So you have to structure that relationship in a particular way. And if the only way you're looking at it is from the perspective of safety, which is important, crucially important, then you're going to structure the agreement in maybe some inappropriate ways. You ha, have to also look at opportunities that you can have to partner with the police to create education, because you're in schools. It must be about education. Education for our students to learn how to be with police officers, but also education for our police officers to learn about our kids and their, their unlimited potential for success. Because oftentimes, police might only see kids when bad things are happening. So if we're structuring our relationship so that police are only called to regulate when things go bad, then we're going to have a bad relationship. We need to structure it so that they can be there for the good things. And we also need to structure it in a way that recognizes that safety does not mean the same thing to all of our students. We need to be safe for our students without being threatening to other students. So that's why provisions around, um, plainclothes officers and then provisions around, um, uh, restorative justice have to be included because restorative justice is a building block from our behavioral education program on up to adulthood. That's one of the pieces that has to be included in there. Two seconds.
So then we'll move on to our next question. Uh, and John, you missed the beginning, so we're going to have everyone go in alphabetical order and we've been going in a rotation. So, uh, just so you know, everyone's got a spot in this, uh, in this list. So, uh, the next question is, uh, one of the district's significant focuses is on equity in its decisions. In what ways do you think the district can improve on equity? And Nicole, you are going first and you've got two minutes.
Thank you. The is an extremely important topic and, and one that, um, is some, is, is a reason why we were initially attracted, my family was, to the Verona area and the school district. In the Madison area, it's one of the more diverse areas, uh, and it has a huge part to play. And I believe, um, school board members need to absolutely support that. As, uh, the daughter of an Iranian immigrant, I remembered showing up to school, um, with weird lunches and having people kind of, um, question that. And I think, um, it's very important to celebrate diversity, as well as making sure that each student is getting exactly what they need and acknowledging that that might not be the same for every student. I believe it's extremely important, um, to ensure that funding and decisions around budgets are given the perspective of how does this serve, um, the most students or students who are at risk? How do we use our federal title funding appropriately? And lastly, I'm, I'm not a teacher. I'm not in classrooms, um, and we need to listen to our teachers and staff. They need to not be afraid to speak to board members and say, hey, here's reasons why I think that teachers, um, need this type of support or why students need this particular type of funding. So, um, I think listening and ensuring that we are being, um, incorporate of everyone's perspective, but then also acknowledging that we need to bring our families into the fold as well and understand the challenges that they're facing and specifically how budgeting and funding can support all of our students.
You. Yana, you are next, and I'll repeat the end of the question there. In what do you think the district can improve on equity? You've got two minutes.
So when I came onto the board, um, during my interview, one of the things that I mentioned was that, you know, Wisconsin is one of the worst states to raise black children. As a young woman in Wisconsin, one of the things I've always said is, before I have children, I'm out of here. I will not raise my children in Wisconsin. However, Wisconsin is one of the best places to raise white children. We, there's a disconnect there. Um, and one of the things that I, I hope to do on the board and the work that I, I have been doing on the board is changing that. How do we start to have real conversations about what we're doing and how the things that we think we're doing that are going well are not? What kind of things can we implement, excuse me, that is culturally relevant? What kind of things can we do for our other students as well? I think sometimes when we talk about equity, we are always talking about what do we do for the students of color? What do we do for our majority students so that they can work better with our students of color as well? I think that it's important for us to think about how all of our students work together, how all of our staff work together. Um, and also looking at how our policies, procedures and curriculum are not moving in a direction towards equity. Sometimes there are policies that are put in place and when we put them in place, they make sense. Then in implementation, we go, oh no, that's not going to work, right? Um, and, and so we have to analyze those things. We have to be willing to make the changes that we need to make in order for us to have a more equitable school district. It's not, um, it's not a secret that Verona's children, African American children and Latinx children in Verona are struggling. They've been struggling. That is not a secret. And we have to address that. We can't continue to say, you know, change takes time, change takes time. We pivoted very quickly when we needed to change in March of last year. Change does not take time when it's a priority and equity must be a priority in our school district.
Thank you. Carolyn, you are next. Uh, I'll repeat the question. In what ways do you think the district can improve on equity? You've got two minutes.
So, Yana's spot on, right? It's about making this a priority. It's completely unacceptable that when you look at students in certain groups like Latinos and Blacks and English language learners and low socioeconomic, um, students, their proficiency in reading and writing is less than 20%. It's often much, much less. And those who aren't in those groups, it's greater than 45%. I wouldn't say 45 is a great bar, but it's really important that we establish what our goals are for students and then focus on funding the activities that are going to close the gaps between our groups and improve performance for everyone. It's about, we need to raise the bar for everyone and close the gaps at the same time. It needs to be work that's done in conjunction with each other. We have a staff who are doing a lot of great work in equity and different things. But we're trying to do too many things, I think. And that's become apparent to me in some of the last few meetings we've had at CIA. We need to focus and we need to say, this is the thing we're going to move the needle on and then put all our efforts behind that. It will lead to greater increases in performance and student, uh, engagement. And it will also reduce the stress on our staff. No one does well when they have to try and do 10 different things. You just end up doing them all, eh. I mean, it's how most parents feel when they're homeschooling, being a parent, being a spouse, you know, doing all the, doing their job, like, none of, nobody feels good when they're not being successful. So we absolutely need to focus on this and, and focus on it now. It, it can't wait any longer. So it's important that we set the goals and the metrics for our students and then work on achieving them.
Thank you. Jen, you are next. Uh, I'll quickly repeat the question. In what ways do you think the district can improve on equity? You've got two minutes.
Well, I, in some ways, I feel like I would start this answer as I started a previous one of, hey, we have every opportunity right now being served up to do this now. Um, I agree with previous things that have been shared. I think in our district, for the time that I worked in the district, we love initiatives. We love new initiatives and we love to do many of them at the same time. And as the data is showing, we're not seeing real change in our outcomes for all learners. So something isn't working. And I do really believe fundamentally, because of the unique construct of our district and the makeup of our district, a large part of this needs to be a bit of self-reflection and really being able to recognize there are practices that can show up in our schools that can make a difference. Are we willing to do them? I have been a part of, as an educator, conversations where raising the bar for some students does not mean holding the bar down for others. I think there's real rooted pieces here that we need to be willing to have challenging conversations on. So then we can be willing to try the things that are different and good for all learners. And I, and I find myself getting in really kind of 30,000 foot view about some of this. And then I find myself craving, like, what are some of the tangible things we can do? And one that I just thought I would offer in this space to just have something to hang on to, I think is our library allocation. Library, literacy, I cannot, I still can't wrap my brain around how the majority of our school buildings in this district don't have a full-time librarian. It's not just about checking out books. It's about literacy. It's about having a media specialist that can work in conjunction with classroom teachers to build literacy practices across all curriculum areas. I mean, that's one piece, right, that I can just think of to say, why don't we try something? And then beyond that, let's dig in, let's self-reflect, let's really check what needs to be done and start to make some changes.
Thank you. John, you're next, uh, and I'll repeat the question. In what ways do you think the district can improve on equity? You've got two minutes.
So, you know, I agree with everybody, equity here is very important. And, and that seems to be the extent of it. I want to get a little bit more, um, specific. You know, our, we do do too much, um, in terms of initiatives, different initiatives that, that, I, I've talked to a lot of teachers and they're, they're feeling it. There's a lot of initiatives. So we do need to focus more, that's spot on. And what we need to focus on is building and extending our sense of community. You know, when, when, when you look at where the school buildings are, um, and, and what is kind of old downtown Verona, you know, there's a fairly tight sense of community around there. Everybody's covered in orange and black. Most people do some sort of athletics or extracurricular activity. But that doesn't expend, extend everyone in our, in our district. And we need to be able to build that community outside of just our curriculum and things like that. We need to take on the idea that schools can and should do more. A lot of these problems are handed to schools by a society that is completely unfair. And, and if we're going to fix that, we can't just be schools. We can't just be in the classroom. We need to look at how we can extend into after-school programs, how we can move education into the community where we're not just, um, teaching outside of the school, but we're going in to learn from those communities as well. Because a lot of equity, you know, our, our, our strategic plan has a lot of good ideas in it. But it starts with things that you can't fund, like respect, all right? And, and, and really trying to create those authentic relationships. You know, I, I, um, grew up in and around section eight housing and, and I can tell you the value of being respected is, is crucially important to building those authentic relationships that you need. And right now, our teachers are too busy to build them with all the busy work and standards-based grading. And I don't know how we can talk about, um, personalized learning, building authentic relationships and equity with a focus on standard-based grading at the same time. Because it busies our teacher and they don't get to know their students the way they need to.
Thank you. And then last but not least, Meredith. The question is, in what ways do you think the district can improve on equity?
I think everybody has touched on critical pieces of this, of this problem and this, the focus that the district needs to take. I'm going to focus on a little bit different piece. Yana said if we're, we can't prioritize too many things, we need to be evaluating our, our policies. She's spot on. We need to be setting clear priorities and we need to be setting clear, um, metrics. And as a board member, we need to be holding the district accountable for reaching those, those metrics. Fundamentally though, we need to be making sure that our budget is aligned with our priorities. Our budget is our expression of our goals and our beliefs. If our budget is not aligned with our priorities, we're already failing. We can't be asking for more but not funding it. So if we are having a focus on equity, our budget should be clearly demonstrative of that focus. That's where the board role comes in. We need to be working to set clear goals. We need to hold accountable to clear metrics. But we also need to make sure that the priorities are very pinpointed and not so broad and scattershot that we're overburdening our staff and our district. We also need to make sure that we are approving funding so we can achieve these goals. Because without the money to do what we want to do, we've already set up our staff and our students for failure. So, um, you know, again, I want to reiterate, I, everything that our other candidates have said, um, and, and it comes down from a board position, we are responsible for approving a budget, setting priorities and holding accountable. And if these are our priorities and they should be, that's our priority, that is our biggest job.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to offer a one minute rebuttal or a conversation extension period, uh, if anyone would like to take it.
Uh, I would. I, I just want to say, one of my reasons for being on all of the committees on the board is equity. And it was hard for me to decide which committee do I pick, right? Do I, do I go to the committee that is focused on curriculum instruction? Well, yeah, definitely. Do I go to the one that's focused on policy and personnel? Yeah, that one too. Or do I go to the one that's focused on our buildings and our, our finances? Yep, gotta be on that one too. And, and that was really the reason for me being on all of the committees because equity is important in making every decision on all of those committees. In addition to that, one of the things that I pushed at our last CIA meeting and everybody has mentioned here to some capacity is, how do we partner better with community members and community organizations that are already doing the work? We do not have to be the experts at everything. We can be the experts at what we do and partner with our community organizations to, for them to be the experts at what they do. That has to be important too.
Thank you.
If I could, if I could step in as well, um, I, Yana, Yana might have stole my thunder at the end there, but it's okay. I, I echo what she was saying about, I, I think, you know, as a leader, when I look at the team of IT professionals that I lead, whenever we fail and we don't meet deadlines, it's because everyone's doing too much. And as I think Carolyn made the face earlier, you could do a bunch of stuff, or, or you could do a few things really well. And I think Yana's point is really important. Although we have these high goals and we want teachers and we believe, um, you know, as John said, that the, uh, schools can play a larger part in the community. I think what's equally important is to understand what you don't do as a school board member and what you spend your energy partnering with others, partnering with the Boys and Girls Club, partnering And what you spend your energy partnering with others, partnering with the Boys and Girls Club, partnering with the Urban League, partnering with city councils. Partnering with maybe the uh, police outside of school. I think it's really important to understand where do you put your efforts and where do you decide to delegate and incorporate?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to take one minute to talk? Yes, you may have it, Jen.
I'd still like to raise my hand and not the zoom hand, the real hand. I think just another tangential piece that, again, I can't help but think of because of my professional situation. Just where I'm, where I'm situated right now is working with pre-service educators that we are intentionally having, they're drilling in to what equitable practices look like in teaching. They're drilling into what social justice looks like in schools and getting inspired and motivated to dismantle things that are not working. So what are we going to do as a district to bring them in? Because now they're ripe and ready and wanting to go do this work and make change. Are we going to be a district that is welcoming to those motivated teachers? And are we going to have systems in place that are going to retain those motivated teachers that believe what our mission statement is and really want to do this work? So I hope we're also thinking about this from a teacher hiring and retention perspective and how we can bring in the best educators. Because they're the ones doing the work that we're talking about.
Thank you. Yes, John, you may have an extra minute. Oh, you're on mute. I'll start over.
I just said the most amazing thing and everybody missed it. I, I just want to add on, everybody's got a lot of uh, great points here. And, and like I said, no, I think equity is crucially important. But I think I want to echo what's being said about you have to kind of know what the board can and can't do. I think that's true, but I also think that the board needs to push a little bit more to be more creative. In the past, I think, you know, Verona has a tremendous tradition of being innovative in education. One of the first districts in the state to have charter schools. It's, it's innovated with a lot of programming in the schools. Um, and we get a lot of good ideas about how to do things from these innovative programs. A lot of uh, great ideas about just best practices, teaching and generally come from special educators that are working under severe constraints. Budgetary constraints, things like that. And we have to give them the space to come up with ideas and do that. That being said, I think that the board has a capacity where it can push a little bit more. You know, we've, we're an innovative district as designated by DPI. We, we were able to push so that um, Explorations Academy could decertify as a charter, but keep its programming going by exempting itself from state laws. We could push more to be more flexible in other ways. Sorry, I went over.
No, or I hate cutting people off, so it's always a very uncomfortable, oh no, I have to cut you off when you're saying something great. Would anyone else like one minute to talk? Yes, Carolyn.
I think, you know, Meredith raises an interesting point about the budget. I mean, that is a place where the board really plays a critical role. But it's hard for us to prioritize as a board, I would say, to date in my role. Because we haven't put metrics to our strategic plan. And over the last three years since I've been here, it's been one critical issue after critical issue after critical issue. And it's imperative that with a new superintendent and we're going to have fresh faces on the board, that we spend time setting those metrics for our strategic plan. So then we can pick where we're going to focus, put our money behind it and then start to see some progress, progress and pivot when we need to, because we're seeing it's not making progress. I think you need to fail fast, like they say in the startup world, and we haven't been great at that in education. And so I think that's something we need to, to innovate on in the next coming years.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has not gotten a minute to speak? I think maybe Meredith is the only one. Meredith, would you like a minute?
I would just, I would, I love what Carolyn just said. We do need to be able to, to pivot more quickly. And um, quite frankly, as a, a, the district of our size, we are really well-positioned to pivot quickly. We're not a behemoth that takes a long time to do a slow turn. We are at a place where we can be fast and we can be nimble and we really need to capitalize on that. Um, I think that comes from clear metrics and that has been lacking, that we really do need to be prioritizing and measuring and the accountability towards that is what will help us achieve the goals that we're setting. That is a strong focus that we need to be um, really proactive and embracing. And actually, that's where the exciting work comes in.
Thank you. Well, that takes care of all the questions I had prepared for all of you. We did get a question emailed to us and uh, we'll go in a circle again and have that question answered. So um, Yana, you'll start. The question is as follows. Amid all the concerns about getting students educated through the pandemic, it can be easy to overlook the needs of special education students. What have your experiences in education taught you about inclusion when it comes to supporting students with IEPs and 504 plans? You've got two minutes.
So my work at MMSD currently is overseeing alternative secondary programs. I would say ninety-eight percent of our students are students of color. Ninety-eight percent of our students have IEPs. They are at the focus of the work that we're doing. One of the things that's also interesting to me is students receiving IEPs and 504 plans for behavioral concerns. That is concerning to me. Just because I can't sit still for three hours straight does not make anything wrong with me. I can't sit still for three hours straight and I just need to get up and move around. You know, and so one of the things that, that I, you know, I really would like to see in our school district, and I push this in MMSD too, but I'm not a board member in MMSD, so I don't have as much power as I do as a board member in Verona. But just what does it mean for our students to, to need extra support? And what does it mean for our curriculum to match the real needs of our students? We can't continue to move forward with a traditional curriculum that's butts in a seat, X amount of time, be quiet, face forward, take your notes. And then I'll see you tomorrow. Don't forget to do your homework. What can we do that can be innovative? Excuse me. Everybody has mentioned relationship building. I love what John said about you can't buy respect. Those are things that also have to be taught in our classrooms. And as we're thinking about, you know, the, the needs of our students, IEPs, 504 plans, we need to prioritize those things. Let's figure out what supports our students need. But even, even with that, in addition to that, our students also need relationships. They need to know there's somebody I can count on and with an IEP or not, people still believe in me. That doesn't mean that I can't. It just means that I can with additional support and we need to provide that additional support.
Thank you. Carolyn, you are next, uh, and I'll read just the back half of the question. What have your experiences in education taught you about inclusion when it comes to supporting students with IEPs and 504s? You've got two minutes.
So I don't know if many people know this, but my youngest sister i- is a special need, is a person with special needs. And growing up as the oldest sibling of someone with special needs, you kind of have a unique vantage point of what it means to, to care for them and, and bring them through the education process and, and beyond, right? At some point, I will be her guardian. So I think it's critically important that we, they were some of the first people we brought back into person, in-person learning. Especially for our students who are in the eighteen to twenty-one-year-old program. This is kind of their last chance to have this community before they kind of go out in the world. And that world might be, you know, living on their own or living in a job or living in a group home. And, and school was one of the places that, that brought the best routine and comfort for my sister. And so I, like Yana said, it's, it's I can with supports. And I think the rest of the students, particularly like my sister's very high need. Learning to work and help people who have special needs creates kind, compassionate, giving children. It's a life skill that is priceless. It's one of the things that my kids are most blessed to have is that they have an aunt with special needs. Because they know how to give and put somebody else in front of them and, and really aid them in a way that's kind and authentic. So I think it's critical that we include and prioritize and, and make sure that they are as much a part of the community as ever, anybody else in our school.
Thank you. Jen, you are next. Uh, I'll repeat the, the last part of the question. What have your experiences in education taught you about inclusion when it comes to supporting students with IEPs and 504s? You've got two minutes.
Thanks. I think um, Carolyn, I'll sort of pick up where you left off, just in terms of the value for our kids in being in diverse school spaces and diversity in all its meaning. And for this particular question, students with special needs. This is why we're here. This is why we bring our kids to our schools. So from a, from a student-to-student piece, how are we really encouraging the culture of how students interact with each other? And then within that, stepping up once and thinking structurally, how are we doing that with the resources that we have? If we're really looking to be the most inclusionary possible, is clustering students because of staffing FTE the best way to do that? Or do we want to really share the wealth of what everyone can experience by working with all students with? The staffing piece again kind of surfaces for me here. And then I step into my other category of, I've been a teacher for twenty years. And I've really prided myself and the teachers that I work with on really coming at, working with any students, students with special needs, any diverse learner from an asset-based frame. What can our students do? They all can do amazing things. So how do we approach all the work that we do from that truly asset-based frame versus thinking from a deficit mindset about what do our students lack? Let's really own and appreciate and put our words and budgets behind the gifts our students have. And really creating a culture that embraces all of those assets that all of our students are bringing to our schools.
Thank you. John, you're next, uh, and I'll repeat the question. What have your experiences in education taught you about inclusion when it comes to supporting students with IEPs and 504 plans?
So um, I have the benefit right now that the class that I'm helping teach for um, aspiring educators is with special educators on inclusive education. So it's something that's very important to me. I also have a lot of experience going back, working with kids that, that I guess today would have 504s in abundance because they were having challenges behaviorally um, in schools. And, you know, I would say from the perspective of being on the board, these are sites where we should be investing. Not because it's a site of great need, but because it's a site of great innovation. Because these are where teachers are developing practices that benefit everyone. You know, when we first, a lot of the literacy practices that we use now and teaching everybody how to read in better ways were developed in dealing with kids that, that may have been diagnosed with dyslexia or some other challenge um, to their reading, you know, twenty or thirty years ago. And now we use that for everyone um, as a best practice. So really looking at special education um, and inclusive inclusivity as a place where we should be investing because it's the smart way to invest our limited resources. The second thing I'll say, when we're talking about inclusion, you know, legally, we're talking about the least restrictive environment is what we should be doing with our students. But really what we should be talking about is what I mentioned earlier. Our schools should be community builders. We include our students in the classroom, in everything that the classroom does, so that our students learn how to build community with uh, people from all different perspectives, backgrounds, um, and ability levels. And, 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 and that should be something that we're, we're focused on. So these should be things that are not special outreach things. These should be things that, that we're doing because they're good investments in our schools and in our community.
Thank you. Meredith, you're next. What have your experiences in education taught you about inclusion when it comes to supporting students with IEPs and 504s? You've got two minutes.
So I started my career as a special education teacher in a district not in Verona. So I feel safe saying, um, the experience that I had was not one that I would wish on our students here. Students were definitely not included. Um, special needs students were very much siloed and to the detriment of really the entire student body. Um, in Verona, I've also had the, the privilege of being an employee and an aide in the classrooms years and years and years ago. And have been able to see that our practices, you know, are definitely leaps and bounds better than where I originally started my career. That's not to say they're where they should be. I think we need to be making sure that the heart of equity work is ensuring that all students have what they need so they can succeed. That applies to all students. And when we are, um, I think when we're talking about students that have special uh, needs, that we're, are looking at a deficit-based, you know, process. And we really need to be shifting our focus. It has to be, how do we help them, how do we help all of our students succeed? What makes it so they can succeed? And we need to be providing that. Again, that comes down to funding, but it also comes down to um, there's structural barriers that we've put in place as us, as a system. Are we making sure that our policies allow for all participation? Are we making sure that our communication networks are open to hearing from parents um, about their students? So they can advocate easily for their students and their students' needs. Are we making sure that everyone is able to participate in the activities that we're putting forward in our schools? And I think that we need to be reviewing, again, um, all of our equity practices. And that does include our students with 504 plans, with IEPs, any of our students that need to be part of this process of review to find out what barriers have we unintentionally placed in the way of true involvement and inclusive um, environments for all of our kids.
Thank you. And then last but not least, but Nicole, uh, it is your turn and I will reread the question. What have your experiences in education taught you about inclusion when it comes to supporting students with IEPs and 504s? You've got two minutes.
Yeah, so um, my experience, um, similar but different to Carolyn's, um, is rather personal. My brother um, has special needs and um, my, my first reaction was that of frustration. My mother, who is a principal now, um, she was a teacher at the time, ended up taking him out of school entirely. We went to private school. Um, when I grew up in Texas, public schools were not uh, the best in Texas. And she took him out of private school because teachers were just assuming that he was less than. Studies show that if you expect less from students, they will, they will achieve those lower bars. And so I think the first thing we need to focus on is um, how do we develop a culture where just as much in a different manner is expected of um, students that fit into this category? I think the other thing, the other importance, and it kind of dovetails into personal learning journeys, is to show every student what success looks like for them. Success is not the same for everyone. Success is not a four-year university. I can show you the college bills that I got from a four-year university and I'm sure a bunch of people can. But for my brother, I wish someone would have talked to him about community college, about trade schools, about different opportunities that were available to him. And I wish they also would have talked to him about um, other potential career opportunities. So um, I kind of want to echo what everyone's saying here. I think it's much better for our students if they're incorporated. Um, and lastly, I think there are really cool and creative ways to incorporate these students socially. Um, I was at a Salesforce conference a couple of years ago and there was a silent disco. Um, and I think one of the schools incorporated that into their silent prom for an autistic student. Um, I think there are really interesting ways where if you let kids rise above, they will show you how they're willing to accept their peers.
Thank you. Now we're running low on time, so normally I would give everyone an extra minute, uh, but we are hitting really closely to this ninety-minute mark. So um, I'd like to uh, allow you guys to now offer opening or closing statements. We're not doing opening statements. We're not doing another hour and a half. We have made our way around the circle, so we will start with Carolyn for her closing statement. Carolyn, you've got two minutes.
So I just wanted to say, I'm really excited to be part of a, an amazing group of people who are running for office. I think it's great to have so many people in our community who want to be part of making a difference. It's, it says a lot about our community. I think from my perspective, as a parent of four children who will soon be at every level in the district, I have a really unique perspective on how board actions impact students. After, you know, not counting the seats that are open right now after this, there's only going to be three out of the four seats that are, are certain that have parents in those roles. And I think it's important that um, we have individuals who understand how this impacts our students. Right now, I'm the only person with elementary students um, even on the board. As I had said earlier, the last term that I had was just one massive issue after another, the strategic plan, our building project. And it left little room for the basics. We were always fighting fires. And so my hope is for the, the next term, if I'm so elected, that we can heal as a district. This year has been really hard. And, and we need to really spend some time healing as a district and a community and focus on thrive. and focus on thriving and that innovation versus just surviving. Because that's basically what we've mostly been able to do is kind of just survive. I'll continue what I've done always on the board, and that is to support and challenge our administration to innovate. I'll work to establish just strategic plan metrics and so that we know where we want to go. And I want to keep working to make it easier for families to advocate for students. Meredith brought this up in talking about special ed families. Right, we still put roadblocks in front of parents when they're trying to advocate for their students, and it's really critical that we try to remove those as much as possible. Thank you so much for the time, Kimberly.
Thank you. Jen, it is your turn for a closing statement.
I want to say thank you, Kimberly, and for all the other folks that helped get this organized, and for all the people that are taking time to listen to us talk for 90 minutes. And just to thank this group, I have to tell you, I feel like I've just been in a really enriching, like professional development session. I feel just so invigorated by this conversation and sharing this space with all of you. Which I guess leads me to say that, you know, being able to be in this position in this moment, I'm incredibly grateful to this district. I, I, as an educator, my roots are in this district. I was hired four days before graduating from my pre-service teaching experience, and I've been here my, this entire time. So I, I feel really privileged to have taken all the growth and all the love and the nurturing that I've received as being a part of the district and the roles I've had, and now potentially being able to serve in this capacity is just an exciting thing for me to think about. And I'd just like to offer a couple of just sort of anecdotal pieces, just that I'm, I'm so excited to be a thought partner. Just as I talked about with even how this evening has gone, I really enjoy the collaborative nature of discussing education and could do this for hours. And I look forward to that aspect of being in a collaborative school board space. I look forward to that in terms of having a new superintendent and reestablishing what collaboration can look like across the district. I'm excited about the opportunity we have to really come together as a district and have a very shared vision with really open dialogue and engaged school board. And, and I will say, I think one of my strongest assets is being willing to ask questions, not just make statements, even though this is all about telling you things. I love asking questions and getting to know more about what's happening. I'm willing to say I don't know, and I'm willing to learn and figure things out and do the work to get there. So I do feel like I would be an asset to this space, but I'm so grateful for this opportunity to have been with all of you. And thanks again, Kimberly.
Thank you. John, it is your turn for a closing statement. You've got two minutes.
Excellent. Well, thank you for having me. And Kimberly, thank you for zipping me that link so I could jump in. I appreciate it. I, I really do enjoy these conversations. But I also really think that, that we need to, to, to be a little bit more pushy and to push more for that innovation that's made Verona so great. I moved my kids here, and I have elementary and middle school age kids because I grew up around here and have always been impressed with how Verona schools in particular have been innovative in how they've offered programming. And we need to keep pushing that by asking tough questions, by being advocates for not just our own interests, but for interests where we see there are need. And, and we need to kind of be able to push beyond conversation a little bit. I also want to echo what Carolyn said about healing. I think we do need to do some healing because I think we, we, we've got a situation where, where trust has been eroded on a lot of fronts. And I think we need to do that by, by committing to kind of listen to each other more, talk to each other more, and, and do things for each other more. And we really need to work on that. One of the things I said previously is our, our, our school board has been really great at investing in our facilities. We have some top-notch facilities here. We need to shift that focus as we're doing this healing to investing in people. And we need to have a school board that is leading by example and getting out and listening to people and communicating with people and respecting people to build those authentic relationships. And I will add one more thing. I think that, that we have been able to be creative in the past because we were nimble, but I think we've constantly got to push back against the tendency to over-manage things, to create too many levels of management that, that our teachers and our students can't be nimble anymore. And we can't create authentic, authentic relationships. And, and we really need our teachers to be able to do that, particularly in times like this where they're, they're limited in their ability to create relationships because you can't be in person.
Thank you. Meredith, your closing statement. You've got two minutes.
Well, first, thank you for hosting this forum. It's been fantastic to hear from these candidates. And I, I would echo what Jen said. It is invigorating to hear all of the fantastic conversation from really remarkable people. And I'd also like to thank the board members that are currently serving because this has been a challenging time, and we've gone through. We haven't experienced the worst of it. I know our staff has taken such extreme hits. But, but this has been a very intense time for school board work. And for anybody willing to step up and be part of the conversation, as I said earlier, I just applaud you. And I am grateful that there are people that are willing to take such care of our children. The Verona School District, area school district, has been the heart of our family. I mean, I've entrusted my child to this district. He's a product of this district. And really, as a parent, when you give your child to a school district, that's the greatest compliment you can give. And it has been an extraordinary privilege then to be a part of that for other people's children. It's a privilege that I don't take lightly. It's one that we really need to be checking ourselves daily. Are we doing what's best for kids? Because that has to be the focus of every decision that we make. Is it best for kids? If, if that answer can't be yes, we need to be rethinking what we're doing. There are no easy answers, especially right now. But I do know that our district is fundamentally committed to our children. I know our staff, the focus and the love that they have for our kids is extraordinary. And again, that comes all the way up to then the board. Everyone sitting on the board puts kids first in different ways. And clearly, everyone in this forum has the heart for children as well. I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunities that I've been given to be on the board, and I'm really excited about what our next chapter has to offer and look forward to seeing where that work takes us. I think we're going some very exciting places. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole, your closing statement. You've got two minutes.
Yeah, thank you so much, Kimberly, for putting this together. And I just want to echo what everyone has said. I, I think we are all talking about public service, and the key word of that is service. And I am so encouraged to see everybody here has the true heart of a servant. There's a lot of putting ego aside and talking about what's best and seeing different perspectives. So while I would love your vote, I am also encouraged to be running with a bunch of other amazing people who are very service-minded. A couple of things to, to leave you with. The first is that as a, a mother who has children who are not yet in this school district, I am heavily invested in the future performance of this school district. My kids aren't almost done. They're just barely starting. And we moved here for these amazing schools and this amazing system and the amazing teachers. And so I'm extremely invested in that. The other piece is that I am a woman in IT who can't write a lick of code. My job and being successful is based on me listening to others, based on me, like Jen said, asking a bunch of questions and understanding and seeing other people's perspectives, and then stepping back and saying, where is the data pointing us, and how can we do this better? And what is, what does the strategic vision look like? How are our decisions now affecting us down the road? And so I plan to bring an ear for listening, an ability to roll up my sleeves and dig in. And then lastly, I think an understanding that my child isn't your child. My experiences aren't your experiences. And so while I can say what's best for my child, I'm going to do my best, if given the option, to say what is best for every child. And so thank you again for the opportunity, and I really appreciate the discussions tonight.
Thank you. And last but not least, with that W last name that I feel the pain for. Yana, your closing statement. You've got two minutes.
Yes, thanks, Kimberly. Thanks for this opportunity to speak, and it was great speaking with all of you. I am the newest person on the board right now. And I remember a few years ago, I was like, wow, it must be tough to be a board member. And then in June, I said, I am going to apply to be a board member. And it is not a decision that I regret at all. It is difficult work, especially right now. It is tough decisions. It's hard conversations. Sometimes we're yelling and screaming at each other, but we all have a passion for it. And I really do have a passion for it. Anyone who has ever worked with me or heard of any of the work that I do knows that I am passionate about education. I am passionate about all children and ensuring that all of our children are able to thrive and grow as they see fit for themselves. One of the other things that I will say is that I am also committed to collaboration. I love working with other people. I understand that I don't know it all. And I think that if we work together, we are more successful than when we're fighting each other or even doing things in silos, and I look forward to that. I also agree with John with we need to ask the hard questions. And one thing my fellow board members will tell you is I ask hard questions. And sometimes I have to come back and say, I am on your team, even though I'm asking hard questions. But I do ask hard questions, and I do push us out of our comfort zone, and sometimes out of the comfort zone for myself as well. I have been privileged to be in spaces that people of color, women of color, have not been able to be in, and I don't take that lightly. And I don't have children. However, I would like to have children. And I am not confident right now in the school systems in Wisconsin to bring my own children into. And I want to build school systems where I am. And that's the role that I play on the board. I am on the board to create change, to implement change, and I will continue doing that if offered to be back on the board after this election. Thank you.
And thank you to all of you for joining us tonight. And thank you to everyone who tuned into this candidate forum. Please remember to vote in the April 6th spring election. Residents can check their voter registration status on the State Election Commission's website at myvote.wi.gov. Residents will also be able to use the myvote.wi.gov website to request absentee ballots for the spring election, look up their polling location, or update their address. We here at the Verona Press and Pittsburgh Star and Back TV wish you all a pleasant evening, and again, thank you for joining us.